Good evening. Welcome to the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for August 17, 2014. May I have a roll call of the members?
Yes, Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Emery Dorsey.
President.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Timms.
Here.
And let the record show Amanda Weaver and Silka Poppe is absent.
Thank you. May we have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Please vote.
Do me a favor, vote again.
Vote again.
Sorry.
Vote again.
Matt Carey's five zero.
Thank you. May we have approval of the minutes of June 19, 2014?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 19, 2014.
I'll second the motion.
Please vote. Thank you.
And Matt Carey's five zero.
Thank you. Now is a time for the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. Is anybody out there here to speak on something other than tonight's agenda item, which is case number WS-14-02? Just checking. Okay. We are moving on to the public hearing. Case number WS-14-02, a request filed by William Lyons Jr. for approval of a 14-lot major subdivision with right-of-way dedication for property zone residential one located at 3301 Quail Street and 3345 Quail Street.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And joining me at the staff table is Scott Brink, who is the Director of Public Works. He will be available for questions, as will I. Case number WS-14-02 is a request for approval of a subdivision plat for property zoned R1 at 3301 Quail and 3345 Quail. The property is a 9.15 acres in size, zoned R1, and the comprehensive plan designates it as neighborhood. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, zoning ordinance, and the contents of this digital presentation.
Accepted.
Thank you. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all posting and notification requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. And just as a housekeeping matter, I would point out that because this is a major subdivision and also that there are right-of-way dedications, Planning Commission will be providing a recommendation to City Council, who is the final authority for approval. So having said all that, this is an aerial photo of the site. I know it's a little bit dark to look at, but it is a 2014 aerial. And just to help orient you, north is to the top, and then we've got 32nd -- oh, the property is outlined in green in this area. 32nd Avenue is down here, south of the site, and then Quail Street runs up the eastern Property is currently vacant. And just to help you a little bit orient, I put this slide together just because the property itself, the major parcel that we're looking at doesn't have any direct frontage on Quail, so I tried to put this together to show where things relate to the property. So again, 32nd Avenue is down here on the south with Quail Street at this location. The Applewood Baptist Church parking lot, which was built a couple of years ago, is in this location. It does have direct access onto 32nd Avenue. The bigger piece that is being looked at tonight is this portion, which is vacant. And then there is another smaller piece that has been included in order to meet state requirements to allow for the dedication for the right-of-way. So again, we're comprised of two parcels. The larger one, which is in this location, is about 7.8 acres in size. Lena Gulch runs across the northwest corner of the property. And there's also a tributary for Lena that enters the property at about this location and then travels northwest to converge with the Gulch. And I would point out that the northwest portion of the property is encumbered with 100-year floodplain. Again, there's no direct street frontage, but we have included another parcel which has direct frontage onto Quail Street. It's about 1.2 acres in size. And there is a house on the northern portion. And the reason it was included in the subdivision was so that we could -- the applicant could legally break off the southern portion, which then becomes right-of-way for the subdivision. And I would point out that even with the existing house and the subdivided portion of it and the right-of-way dedication, still all the R1 Zone District regulations are being met. And total acreage, again, is 9.15 acres. So this is a copy of the zoning map, and the property is outlined in a red dashed line. And again, you can see the existing improvements with Quail Street on the east, Lena Gulch on the northwest portion. And what that yellow means is that all the property surrounding the subject parcels is also zoned R1. We have some variety of land uses. There is some vacant property to the west. To the south is the Applewood Baptist Church parking lot. We've got adjacent development on Quail, which is zoned R1, and single-family, and so on. Let's see. The bigger parcel, which is about 7.8 acres, was subject to a subdivision request back in 2007. That case number, which was WS-07-01, divided this parcel into 11 lots, and it was approved by both Planning Commission and City Council. However, the plat was never recorded. This is a diagram of the graphic portion of the request. Subsequent to the 2007 plat approval, we've had some very changed conditions. First of all, the Applewood Baptist Church developed that adjacent southern vacant, which was then vacant, into their parking lot. The second thing was that we modified the subdivision regulations to extend the maximum length of a cul-de-sac from 500 feet to 700 feet. And finally, we adopted revisions to the regulatory floodplain. And I do have a slide of that. So again, the property is outlined in red with Quail Street over here on the east, and north is to the top. In 2003, when the -- which was the adopted floodplain map at the time, this lighter blue color was the 100-year floodplain limit. In 2014, the new map adoption reduced that 100-year floodplain down to the darker blue area. So there was some pretty good property that was picked up as a result of the new map adoption. And with that, let's take a look at some slides. The first slide, I am standing on 33rd Avenue, looking west towards the frontage of the property, which is right in this location. Now I'm standing on Quail Street, looking to the north. Over on the right-hand side of the screen, the image shows the improvements for the Prospect Valley Elementary Parking Area, and then the single-family homes, which are above the property. This particular house that I'm pointing to right now is the property at 3345 Quail, which is part of the subdivision. This is a picture of the front of the house. This is -- this was an interesting property to try to take pictures of because I really couldn't get in there, so I had to do things from the exterior. This particular slide is on the southern portion, about where the right-of-way for 33rd Avenue would begin, looking into the property, looking west. Here I am, looking south on Quail. And again, the subject property is over in this area, right here. This particular slide, I was standing in the subdivision, which is located to the west at Route Street, and looking to the -- actually, this is wrong, to the northeast from Route, towards the property. The trees in the background are on the subject property. So the plat that we're looking at tonight has three sheets in it. This is the first sheet of the plat, and I like to call that the declaration page. And it contains sort of the boilerplate stuff, like the legal description and required signature blocks for the property owners. There's a place for the county to put their recording information. We also include notes on this regarding maintenance issues and that kind of thing. So that's page one. Sheets two and three show the layout of the subdivision. And I've got a combined picture that we're going to look at in a minute, which will maybe make a little bit more sense to you. But this sheet two is the design of the plat on what we're calling the larger piece. So north is to the left-hand side. This is the street that comes in as 33rd Avenue extended, which ends in a terminus at the western property line. There's a cul-de-sac bulb called Quail Court, which comes in from 33rd Avenue and goes to the north. It does end in a cul-de-sac bulb. Lena Gulch is located in this area, right in here. So this is the third page of the subdivision plan set. And this is looking at the piece that's addressed as 3345 Quail. This is the ownership currently of that parcel. And the house is located in this area. They are planning on creating a new lot line to make a new development parcel. And then this is what is going to be dedicated for right-of-way for 33rd. Now, I put these together to try to give you a better idea of how it all kind of fits. And so again, this is the graphic from sheet two of the subdivision, which is this bigger piece, and the graphic from page or sheet three, which is sort of the right-of-way dedication piece. And I put those together, and so this gives you an idea of the overall. Now, this changed the orientation a little bit. Now we're looking at north to the top of the slide. Quail Street is over in this location, and this is 33rd Avenue as it comes into the subdivision and Quail Court extending. So again, the proposal is to subdivide the property into 13 new lots to be developed with single-family structures. The property is zoned R1, and with the subdivision and including the piece with the existing house, all of the minimum requirements for the R1 Zone District have been met by the application. Again, because we're dividing up the existing lot on Quail Street to create a dedicatory area for the street, we had to include that house lot as part of the subdivision. Let's see. So the house lot is located on this. This is the new lot that's being created on the southern portion of the lot. And then this is the right-of-way piece that allows us to hook onto Quail Street and extend 33rd Avenue to the west, with which that ends at the western terminus of the property. We have shown a temporary cul-de-sac bulb on that. However, the way the property is situated, it would allow the extension of 33rd further to the west if that adjacent vacant property would at some point come in as a development application. Both Quail Court and 33rd Avenue will be full with dedicated streets with 53 and 51 feet of right-of-way width. Curb, gutter, and sidewalk would be installed on both sides of the streets for both of those. There are several tracks that are included in the subdivision. Track A, which is up here at the top, at the northeast corner, encompasses the Lena Gulch drainage way and the portion of the property which is encumbered by 100-year floodplain. Track B, which I believe is over here, serves as a stormwater called the detention area. Track C and D are actually down here and help serve as the cul-de-sac bulb if and when the property or the property to the west might be developed. The street, 33rd Avenue, could be extended, and those, what we call eyebrows, could be vacated back to the property owners. And finally, tracks D and E are coincident, or they're running parallel with the 33rd Avenue extension to Quail Street and will serve as entrance features for the subdivision. I think at this point, the applicant was talking about perhaps some fencing and signage and upscale or upgraded landscaping. Typically, at this point in my presentation, I would talk a little bit about what's being proposed as far as the drainage for the site. However, when I was preparing the staff report, right before I left town, we were informed by the developer that there have been some design complications based on discussions with the Army Corps of Engineers. So I'm going to conclude my discussion on the plat piece of it and let them go into what's happening with the redesign, and then we can open up for questions. I would point out that we have gone through our standard referral process. All of the agencies that have been contacted said they can serve the development with improvements installed at the developer's expense. And that would include consolidated mutual water, northwest liquid sanitation, Wheat Ridge Fire District. I would point out that Wheat Ridge Parks Department has done an analysis. And as you're aware, anytime we have a residential subdivision, there is an analysis that is done relative to future park improvements. In this situation, they have indicated that they will require fees in lieu of land dedication, which will be paid at the time of plat recording, and that amount is $32,464. Public Works has reviewed and approved a final drainage report and plat document for what's being shown in my presentation. Any revisions to that, whether it includes drainage or changes to the plat, will have to be re-reviewed as part of that next step. So and again, this conclusion is based on the plat that was included in your packet. And with that, we did conclude that all of the requirements of the R1 Zone District regulations have been met, all of the subdivision improvement regulations have been met. And because agencies can provide service to the property, we are giving a recommendation of approval. Now, I included three conditions that are in your staff report. Number one, that an SIA be executed with regard to public improvements installation. Number two, the parks fees be paid at the time of plat recording. Number three, that the HOA covenants be reviewed by staff to ensure that all the common maintenance improvements will be able to be taken care of. The added condition, which is down here, relates to the potential redesign of the property for the Army Corps of Engineers, and that condition is that the applicant work with staff to modify plat design as required by the Corps. So with that, I can answer questions now, or we can hear from the applicant, who will talk about what has changed with the property, whatever would be your pleasure.
I'm assuming we have questions of staff, yes? I will start on this side. Commissioner Ohm.
Thank you. Just to confirm, it looks -- appears that the final plat shows the 2014 floodplain?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any lots in the floodplain?
There are not.
Okay. And then, do you know what the Army Corps of Engineers requires, or is that something for the applicant?
I am going to defer to the applicant. I'm not real well-versed on their requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Timms?
Good evening. I have a question on flag lots.
Okay.
Didn't we -- when we updated the subdivision regs this year, didn't we add some restrictions on flag lots? In particular, Lot 12, proposed Lot 12?
We did take a look at flag lots and the subdivision regulations. It was a little bit different context. It was more where you had a street with stacked lots behind each other with the access running down one side through the other lots. And the issue was that it be taken -- that flagpole portion be taken out of the calculation. This is the largest lot in the subdivision, and quite honestly, I did not do that calculation, but perhaps the engineer might have that information. We could do a quick calculation to make sure it still meets the regulations.
Was there discussion about Lot 12 between the applicant and staff? I'm just wondering, it just seems like it's a leftover remnant that was, we don't know what to do with it, so we'll just call it another lot. Was there any other design options talked about from the staff's perspective?
Well, we went through a series of design discussions with the applicant as far as what would be the best street system. We originally looked, were looking at a horseshoe kind of configuration, but we ended up with too many corner lots. And you guys could help refresh my memory. That was decided that it wasn't the most efficient use of the space. In a regular situation, staff would not be super crazy about this just because of the long pole that attaches down here and the need for this long driveway. But this seemed to be the most efficient use of space.
Yeah, we have a 150-foot flag, so the driveway will be, you know, a minimum of that. We have someone's front yard that will face everyone else's backyard. I just don't know how that's connected with the rest of the development in terms of some of the overall design elements addressed. I was wondering if there are any discussion of maybe doing something similar to what they did in Lot 5, is bringing it down between Lot 7 and 8 even, and somehow accessing it that way. But I'm not really crazy about that either. So just as FYI. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Dorsey.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Buckman.
Thanks. Just some questions relating, I guess mostly to Track A, the Lena Gulch tract.
Yes.
This might be a question directed to the Director of Public Works. Will the development require any modification to the Lena Gulch water course?
It will not.
Okay. So it will remain in its current state in terms of waterway contours, vegetation, lining, all that? Okay. Have there been any improvements or modifications to Lena Gulch's historic water course, either up or downstream, you know, over the course of, say, I don't know, 1,000 meters in each direction you can think of?
There were improvements. Lena Gulch is one of the major drainage ways through the city, and it essentially enters the city at about 29th and Youngfield, and then travels northwest where it converges with Clear Creek, right at about Kipling. Back in the mid to late 80s, there was a channelization project primarily funded by urban drainage, but also participated by the city. And we came through and did channelization from pretty much parfet, parfet over to the convergence under Kipling. Some of that improvement was natural drainage. A lot of it was concrete, a concrete type of design, which is sort of the old design you see. There have also been some minor modifications, a little bit further upstream, just to make it not quite so bendy-turny. I think Carol Green's in the audience, you had some improvements adjacent to her property. So but nothing major from this site further upstream.
But just to reiterate, no modification to the water course is required for development of this particular subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions, please. So it states that the roads will be considered fire lanes. That means no parking on them, correct?
It doesn't mean no parking. It does mean that we have accounted for parking on both sides. And so maybe that was a misnomer in my report, but Wheat Ridge Fire did approve these. The cul-de-sac bulb, I think, is probably the area that's probably the most impacted, and I would suspect that that piece of it might be signed.
Okay. Because in the report and then on your slides...
I said that. I know.
Okay. So is that different?
Well, they have -- the street section has been modified from the original referral, and we have re-reviewed it with Kelly Brooks, who's the fire marshal, and he has approved it, so...
But it won't be a fire lane as read into the record?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get at. Okay. And then I do have a question. Sorry. Have to find my notes. Ah, so any, based on the Corps' feedback and changes, any future plat reviews would be administrative?
I would think that if we're making substantial changes, like losing lots, reconfiguring streets, we probably will come back to Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you for that. So at the beginning of your presentation, you explained where Lena Gulch is, and then you explained that there was a little tributary.
Tributary.
Yep. Let's talk about that tributary, shall we? Yeah. So has there -- it's clearly not in the floodplain or portions of it, the little triangle, I love that little triangle thing, is there, but addressing any other water coming into there, it looks like it's landing in the middle of the bulb.
And again, we'll take a look at the revised...
Okay. Okay. Here's another question I can ask of staff.
Okay.
ABCs, the Applewood Baptist Church, their parking lot clearly is all asphalt with no drainage. I walked that whole sidewalk, that whole -- so all the drainage is going to go to the north?
Actually, when they originally subdivided, here, let's go to -- when they originally, back in 1986, or 96, 86 or 96, Applewood Baptist, who owned the entire parcel, came in and subdivided the property in half.
Yes.
With this being one lot and then this being another lot. At the time they did that, the drainage report showed a pond that extended over into this area.
Uh huh.
Okay. Then, when they came in and built, they did a revised drainage report, which included detention on the north end, which means they didn't need that drainage easement on the subject property. So my recollection is that part of their drainage goes to the north, the other part goes to the west, which is then carried down to Lena Gulch.
So as part of staff's review of this lot, it's not under your purview to make sure that the lot adjacent has the appropriate detention-retention areas?
Well, we did, again, we reviewed a report just a couple of years ago to accommodate the new construction of the parking lot.
Okay.
And like I say, made provisions for the two areas where it would drain to Lena Gulch.
Okay.
I mean, you can see...
I didn't see much of...
You didn't see this?
I saw it. It didn't impact, it didn't impress me as a retention-detention, but I'm not the expert, so... Okay. And then, just to clarify, so that we don't have an orphan lot, the lot to the west, this is not a private road, this is a dedicated road, so any development on that long lot to the west, if it's developed, they will be able to use this road like anybody else.
They will. Actually, so here's Quail Street, 33rd Avenue is here with this proposed plat. It extends to this location.
Right.
The -- this is Route Street.
Right.
Which is to the west. And there is a cul-de-sac bulb there right now, but there's 50 feet of right-of-way, which is dedicated to...
Connect, so it would connect.
And so if and when this would be subdivided, the logical extension would be to connect these.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. Those are all my questions for now. Thank you. I appreciate it. Oh, educate me for a second because we know sometimes as the 2007 plat, that things are done and then they're never recorded. What would occur, what would happen if in the current design, we approved, it's recorded, and the firm, the D-firm, the floodplain is changed before the buildings are completed? Is there any impact, there's, is there any impact to the plat and to this, to this subdivision? Or is it only an impact to the, the purchaser of the house because they have to carry flood?
Well, I, I mean, it kind of depends. For one thing, FEMA only updates the firm maps. It's such a huge deal.
Right.
That we actually had approved and were implementing the floodplain maps. I want to see in 2008, but they didn't become officially adopted because of the digital process and the cost of that until 2014. So that's been six years. It's highly unlikely that in the next 20 years, they would be redoing.
Yeah. And I believe, I believe the previous map was, was done in 1973.
Right.
Yeah. So they don't do it very often and when they do, it's a, it's a very long process.
Okay. Okay. So, okay. So my, my question is moot. Okay. Thank you. So now is the time for the applicant. So I have a favor. Give you, I think we, introduce yourself. Spell your last name for the record, please, and an address, your business address, home address, whatever. And then when you're ready to hand off to your, your expert, same thing, first name, last name, spell, last name, address, et cetera. So we can just record you guys. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My name's William S., excuse me, William S. Lyons Jr. I preside, my office is at 6003 Willow Creek Drive in Greenwood Village, Colorado.
Thank you.
I, my company is called Creekside Communities. We currently have nine projects throughout the metro area. And primarily, I build for the empty nester. And what we plan on doing here is building these homes, all of which will be single story, all of which will have at least a three-car garage, some of them will be four-car garage. And all my projects right now are driven towards the empty nester, which means all being single stories, all flat floors. So there's no tripping and these and, because the demographics of, well, the whole country is getting older. The baby boomers is like a tsunami coming towards us. So, let me move this forward. So this is, this is a streetscape that you'll see. It's more of a European style and they're all brick or stone and stucco. There's no siding on the homes. You, if you're, as you're, I'm sure you're well aware, Wheat Ridge doesn't have any type of apparently architectural guidelines, but our, our product is one of which has the steeper roofs, tile roofs, you know, ten, twelve-foot ceilings. And we do things, because of their empty nesters, we do quite a few energy efficient type of things inside the home, which I can go into should you have any questions. We typically have a minimum rear yard of thirty feet and the zoning in the R1 has fifteen-foot side yards, which are, is very generous. And the front yard setbacks are large as well. Next one, please. So this is the, the current lot layout we have. And well, as I go through this, I'll try to address some of the questions that you had. And then maybe at the end, if I missed any, you can maybe ask me those that Meredith wasn't able to answer. When we first met with staff and we came up with this layout, I believe staff and engineering liked this layout better than the one that was originally approved, well, tentatively approved in 2007 or eight, because this, this layout has the capability of connecting to that Row Street through that property that's on the west. Because our homes are pretty good sized, the lots here are, the zoning in the R1 is for 12,500 square feet, I'm sure you're probably already aware of. Our average size of our lots here are approximately, the average size is 14,462. So we're about 1.3 size, 1.3 larger than what the code requires or the zoning requires. Next slide, please. So what we plan on doing is putting at the entry off of Quail, is putting an entry monument, all out of stone. The column that you'll see if you're looking at this on the right is about four feet at the top, bottom and about eight feet at the top. And the monumentation on the left has a planner area and a name. And then you can, at the top of the slide, you'll be able to see how that monumentation will be. The track that Meredith had talked about, we plan on having common area landscaping on both sides of the street going down to create a sense of entry. Next slide, please. What you see here is, if you look on the, each side of the street, you'll see those three little boxes, well, appear to be little, on each side of the street. Those will be four-foot tapered up to three-foot columns with these heavy six-by-16 beams with a three-by-eight lattice work on top that will be uplit. So as you go down in the street, you'll have this. And then you'll see the, we're proposing the evergreen trees we plant behind it, which you'll see at the top of the slide in the darker green round areas. Next slide. So this slide shows the layout from, you know, X amount of feet up. It shows the surrounding area. Next slide, please. This gives a perspective. You can tell how our lots line up with the homes that are directly to the east, as far as size and dimensions. And because of the, the zoning and because of the setbacks, those are single-story homes that are placed on there presently. And you can tell that there's quite a bit of open space in between them. Next slide, please. This is one from straight up and you can see how this is, you know, an infill piece of property with these homes. Next slide, please. So this gives a little different perspective. You see the parking lot on the right, Leanna Gulch there on the left, the property to the west, which we, we actually did try to buy, but we're, we're not able to make a, a deal with the gentleman. And, and you can see downtown out there farther to the south there. Next slide. More of the same here. Next slide. This one shows the Leanna Gulch and it shows the back of the house. That's Lot 7, I believe, and how that would look. That particular lot is, is a walkout lot. Go ahead. Next one. This brings it in a little bit closer so you can tell. You see the parking lot to the left. There's a currently a fence there presently. And you can see to the north of that parking lot, that long inner tube, kind of a space, that is that detention pond for that parking lot and that drainage. Next slide. This gives a little more perspective on how it's going to feel with the neighborhood. This is taken off Google Earth. You can see the homes on the right. So you see the distance between the back of the house to the back of the house is a pretty large space. And let's go to the next slide, I think. Let's go back to that other one. If you, if you could, let me get this mouse. To the one planning commissioner's comment about the flag lot, what we, this out here to the back has amazing views. And how we end up placing this, this lot here is about 17,000 square feet as compared to 12,500, which the zoning allows. And what we did is we made sure that it had a very wide space in between the property line and the house here. So it wouldn't have that connotation of feeling like a flag lot. If you notice, all this open space in between, we, we did spend quite a bit of time with our engineer and our architect to try to design this. So it, it actually did not feel like a flag lot. And then you can see how this whole back area here is, goes clear out to Leanna Gulch. So we'll have a very nice views outside that. Next slide. So Mark Bishop is here with Gene Engineering. He's our civil engineer on this. And we'll turn the time over to him and, or should, if you have questions with me now, we can do that or we can do it at the end, however you prefer.
Does anybody have questions with Mr. Lyons? Not right now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So same drill, Mr. Bishop. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mark Bishop, B-I-S-H-O-P. I actually live in Wheat Ridge 3645 Lewis Street. And I work for Gene Engineering, who did the, a vast majority of the planning as well as the engineering on this project. As it's engineering and it's boring and what have you, I'm going to try to be brief here and get through this Army Corps issue and then feel free to bomb me with questions at, at the end if I don't, if I don't answer what you have in mind. Let me start with your question about how's this drainage channel that comes through here, you know, it looks to you like it's going to a bulb. Well, technically today it is going, the way it is going to a bulb, that's being handled by a catch basin here, right at the, at the throat of where that little tributary comes in. And then there's two 54, this, in this plan, it's two 60-inch pipes that will be coming down and daylighting out down at this side of the subdivision and then going into Lena Gulch. And this area here is the detention pond for the church. And it has a detention structure, an outlet structure, right in this location, which goes to this 36-inch pipe here, which can, is in an easement down the west side of this property and down to Lena Gulch. The cul-de-sac here and the rest of the subdivision all gets routed to the water quality pond and then released out to Lena Gulch for all the, the street impervious. I think we show water and you two, and sanitary sewer, just that, that all works within the subdivision and is all connected. Water is connected to Quail Street and sanitary sewer is down in Lena Gulch. So I'll go to the next slide. So now I'm going to go to what's potentially changing. And let me start with, in the 2008 plan, there was a Nationwide Permit 29 that was issued as part of that. And that is a, a, a permit that is a national permit, that's an administrative permit that allows for impacts to wetlands. And it was, it was, it was actually issued, but it was issued without a juris, what's called a jurisdictional disposition. When we started this, we assumed that that would be good because we were not impacting any more wetlands than the original plan had. So about a month, month and a half ago, I went out with the Corps of Engineers and we walked the site because the Nationwide Permit 29 had expired in 2010 and was not renewed yearly like it should have been. So now we were in the point of having to renew it. So we walked the site and we primarily walked it to make sure that the delineation of the wetlands, as was shown in 2008, which is what we used, was still the delineation of the wetlands in 2014. He made a finding that the, that the delineation itself was in, was the same. And he also agreed that we were impacting less than one-tenth of an acre, which is important in the Nationwide permitting process, because it means you don't have to replace any wetlands that you're impacting. So we were just under a tenth of an acre. And the fact is that this water quality pond will probably generate that, that kind of volume of, of water quality of wetlands anyway. So, so that was not the issue. The issue became that because this stream was never defined as a jurisdictional waterway, okay, as part of the original Nationwide 29 permit, he went out, there's different inspectors now, there's different people at the Corps today than there was in 2008. They've had significant staff change. He, he, in his opinion, this is a jurisdictional waterway, which means if you impact more than 300 street of stream, 300 feet of stream bed, then what happens is you had, you'd go from a Nationwide 29 permit, which is an administrative process, okay, to what's called an individual permit process with the Corps. And at that point in time, you have the EPA involved and public hearings and it's could take, it could take up to a year to get that permit processed. So we chose to take a different look at it and, and it has pretty much just two significant impacts to what you've seen tonight. One is that Lot 2, oh, I gotta do that. Lot 2, which is here, okay, would be turned into a waterway tract from here to here. And this lot would get some of this side and this lot would get some of this side. And so we, what we're doing is we're losing a lot is, is in essence what's happening. And what we're doing is, is we're going to basically funnel off some of the, the water that flows in there kind of on a daily basis now. We're going to funnel that off and run it through the subdivision. And, and the reason for that is opposed to having taken all of it and run it through, is because we want to be able to sustain the wetlands. So we're gonna, so we're going to channel that off. And then because these, the way these pipes, to, to build these pipes, we have to impact the wetlands anyway. So we're going to pipe over that, was the original thought. And then we've kind of been thinking lately that we want to do like a grouted riprap over the top and kind of treat it at least as natural as we can. And, and try to turn what we, what we, what's, what we got kind of stuck with, to be honest, into, into an amenity as opposed to a bad thing. And then, hmm, I lost my, where'd he go? No, it's up here. Lost my pointer. There we go. All right. So then it would come here, and, and this is a small pipe. It's a 12-inch pipe because like I said, it's just, it's just conveying the little, the nuisance flows that actually sustain the wetlands. It would come across, what's going on here? It would come across and then it would daylight out here. We would widen the lot lines between here so that this, that Track A would actually extend up to here and we would save these wetlands as well. So we save the wetlands through here, save the wetlands through here and convey the low flows. And then the rest now would go through two 54-inch pipes because we've taken some flow off and we would run them, run it out through here, just as we were in the original plan. So the net result is we lose a lot, we gain, we gain an amenity and, and everything else is pretty much the same. So I guess I'll end on that note. And if you have any questions of me, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So I'm going to start on my left this time. So, Commissioner Buckman?
Um, let's see. So this, so what you're saying is this new configuration appeases the, the Corps of Engineers in terms of satisfying their requirements to maintain the amount of wetland that's required?
It is our understanding that it does, yes.
Okay. And what sort of approval, further approval process do you need from them before you can move forward with the project?
We have to do a formal submittal and then it's a 30 to 45 day process for, they have up to 45 days to issue the permit if it's, if they, if it's deemed appropriate that we've met all their criteria.
Okay. And at that point, would you do an official replat and resubmission of that plat? Or would you be replating it before you make that submittal?
I think what would happen, I think what we're hoping for, and Bill might be able to talk to this a little more, but I think what we're hoping for is to get approval of the concept, what have you, at work with the Corps, work with city staff, and get to the point where we have city council approval with the revised plat. The revised plat will be here next week for a review by city staff. And the idea being that we would be, and we'd be submitting to the Corps early next week as well. And then they would have, start there 45 days. We do city council, but the plat could not be recorded, and we could put a note on there or something, but the plat could not be recorded until said time as, as the Army Corps gave, issued a Nationwide 29 permit.
Okay. All right. Great. Yeah, that's, but, so then would, would we maybe then, just from a procedural standpoint, maybe prefer to continue this until we actually had a plat that?
Well, and actually now, I was just mentioning to Scott that I misspoke.
Well, and actually, now, I was just mentioning to Scott that I misspoke when I was up there. You know, you had asked what the process would be and I said, you know, we'd probably come back. But that's not, if we don't have to do that, we would be saving a lot of time. I wrote that fourth condition in under the situation where if you guys are okay approving it in concept, as long as we can work with the developer, then we could go to city council instead of coming way back. I mean, you can see the way the street system is basically the same. Most of the lots are the same. We do lose one. But it's, the excess space is redistributed, so it's actually becoming a less intensive subdivision than a more intensive subdivision. And in light of that, I'm going to retract what I said and if you feel comfortable approving it in concept and allowing us to work with the applicant, then we could go straight to city council. We've been working with these guys for two years trying to get a subdivision that worked on this, so.
I've never approved anything in concept at this dais.
That might be true.
The only other thing I'd wanna add is I appreciate the applicant's efforts in retaining the amount of wetland that the Corps of Engineers is mandating. I think it's, as you say, it's an amenity. I think it's something that would be appreciated by the homeowners who are gonna end up near it and also the community at large. So, you know, I applaud that part even though, you know, it takes more time and might be a little more of a headache. I think it's worth doing. And we up here can talk about the mechanisms of what we need to do next after we've heard all this, but that's all I have. Thanks.
The other thing, of course, any revisions to the drainage report that are required because of this would be reviewed administratively. So, we make sure that, you know, all our requirements are still being met. So, that would obviously occur.
Commissioner Dorsey?
Now that we're creating a wetlands here within the development, that's going to be just an open area. Is it going to connect to any of these trails that that follow that Lena Gulch in places?
Actually, I'd like to address that. About five years ago, we were updating our, I believe it was the Parks Master Plan, which of course delineates open space and also informal trail systems that are not part of public right-of-way. And one of the recommendations was made was that Lena Gulch become a wildlife riparian corridor, be formalized with a walking path that extended the length of it. And the neighbors who were impacted spoke vehemently against it at city council and that was not something that was recommended. So, that piece was taken from the plan. So, at this point, we're looking at Lena Gulch just as a wildlife corridor and obviously drainage corridor.
Okay.
So, no path connection.
Could I make one more correction with that? We're not actually creating wetlands, we're saving wetlands, yeah.
Saving, right.
We're not creating any more than is already there.
Right. That was going to be filled in basically with Lot Two. So, the HOA will have to maintain that?
That's correct. And that's why, actually, the HOA maintains all the landscaping in this project because it is, I don't know, for empty nesters, so.
Right, right. I read that in the plan here, but this is adding to
That's correct.
That, so, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Tims?
No questions for the applicant, thank you.
Commissioner Ohm? I have a couple of questions. So, for the lots that are remaining, is it your intent to add any fill to raise the lot?
Yes, there is an intent to raise, to add fill, primarily due to groundwater.
Okay. Can you give me a swag?
Round and round figure?
Yeah.
Well, I would say on the south side of the project, it ranges, well, from the south to the north, it ranges from about three feet of fill to six foot of fill. And part of that is to get the, in order to get the road down and over the proposed pipes, if you will, okay, we had to bring up the project. And then, as we went, the funny part about this project is the groundwater is actually shallower in that north, in that southeast corner as opposed to down by Lena Gulch. But that's, I'm not sure exactly what that's all about. And then, on the southern, on the northern side, it's an average of about six feet, but it primarily matches. It primarily matches, let me put it two ways. Primarily matches where the elevations of the finished floors of the units to the east, of the houses to the east, and also because of his single stories, his, in R1, his own thirty-five feet of height. His highest building, the highest elevation of his roof is twenty-nine feet. If we add six feet, we're still, even if we went from existing ground today, we could build up to thirty-five feet.
I get it. Okay. Thank you. So, with the new, the revised plan that we're really not reviewing today, but we're seeing it. So, to follow on to Commissioner Dorsey's question, so the HOA will be responsible for making sure that whatever is sluicing off this water is still functioning correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. And when the Army Corps of Engineers comes knocking next month, next year, two years from now, and they have concerns or something's blocked or they just wanna review, who do they review with? The property owners aligning the lots one and two, or sorry, lots one and three? Do they go to the HOA? Who do they go to?
They would go to the HOA because the entire length that they would be concerned with is in a separate tract, which is owned and maintained by the HOA.
Got it. Okay. And then, my last question, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget. Oh, so if you go back a couple and I just convince a design thingy, go back one more. Do you see that house in the top right? All through these slides, it's been white. Is that because it's the special house?
No, because we just peeled off three D models that kind of represented his homes. They're not actual representations of his homes.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out why that one all in the slides was white when none of the others was white. So, I was, yeah, it was a white house. Okay, I'm good for now. Anybody have any other questions? Oh, no, I'm good for now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now is the time for the public hearing, or the community comments. So, we have some folks signed up. Okay, yes, yes. So, we have one person signed up to speak, but once we get through this list, anybody else in the audience that wants to speak but didn't sign up, you've got time, okay? The way this works is you come up, first name, last name, spell your last name for the record. Please give your address, especially if you live adjacent, that'll help us. And then, speak to us. Don't speak to the applicant, speak to us. And then, any questions or concerns, we can go back to the applicant and go back to staff. But if you start a conversation with the applicant, it's really not on the record. Everybody got that? Okay. So, first one, Debbie Perry. You don't wish to speak. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it. Okay. So, anybody who wants to speak, come on up. Oh, no, no, this is your right. Come hither. So, first name, last name, address, thank you.
I'm Caroline, otherwise known as Carol Drury Green. I live on the northeast corner of this development, so I have adjacent land. I have two acres going north of that. So, what I'm concerned about, and I'm not great at interpreting these maps, Lena Gulch has a low-flow channel that runs through my property with all the trees that run due north. If you can flip back to any other pictures, maybe you can see it, Meredith. It's not that big a deal. I'm no engineer, so I'm counting on you guys to...
We're gonna get out of that.
Yay.
And...
Thank you, Meredith.
Of course. Let's see, so... This, this...
It shows where it divides on my corner.
This, let's see what that looks like.
And shows from above the line of trees.
Well, okay, so, so here's Lena.
That's still not the correct corner that...
Because you're right here.
I do see a great one.
Hmm.
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
The applicant might have had a good aerial... Yeah.
Is that a possibility? Great.
Okay, so, there you go.
Just see if we can... That, let's see if, that's not quite there?
No, it's the division of Lena Gulch.
That's it.
Can you see it there?
Okay, I'll go.
Can we make a dig?
Let me try one more. Okay, let's go back to that. Okay, you set, this is the parcel here? Okay.
Can you make a dig? Can you do a slideshow?
And?
Can you make it slideshow so we can see it? Just go down and, go down, yeah, and say, "From current slide." Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, everyone's set. By the way, my last name is spelled Green, G-R-E-E-N. My formal address is eleven-two-five-four West Thirty-eighth Avenue, Wheat Ridge. Anything else you need for that? Okay, as I said, I'm in the farthest east corner of this development, adjacently. I don't know how many feet, actually. And Lena Gulch was revised in about ninety-one. And I don't recall dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers at all. It was all through urban drainage. And, oh, you know the gentleman, the nice Dave? No, long ago, he was a member of your church and working with your urban drainage, Dave, I'll think of it. Anyway, he was wonderfully helpful and Dave Lloyd, he should be your hero. He was a wonderful man if he's still with us. Anyway, he was responsible for that project in ninety-one. And amongst all the great minds of the time, they decided to create a land bridge at the corner of my property on the southwest corner. My house is all the way to the north with my driveway off of Thirty-eighth Avenue. So, I'm kind of landlocked in the middle. And this created a land bridge at the corner, at the southwest corner of my property. And so, the low-flow channel was intact with all the trees and the wildlife. Nothing was disturbed. And then, a high-flow channel was created on the eastern side of my property bordering Amanda Weaver's also. There's a borderline right through the middle. And that's how it works there. So, I'm concerned about the coordination of the Army Corps of Engineers, the City of Wheat Ridge, urban drainage, and me, and the developers, and measuring runoff is going to be important. That's my only question for which I have no answer. And the city engineer.
Thank you.
Because last September, when there was so much runoff and the overflow channel, the high-flow channel of Lena Gulch was almost at capacity. So, there'll only be more in future and so, the question is, how's it gonna be?
Don't go away. Does anybody have any questions of the, thank you, thank you, Ms. Green. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Now's your chance. Don't be shy. Come on up. Good evening.
I'll thank you, Bard. Thirty-four fifteen Quail Street. And my question is, how is it, excuse me, I'm a bit hoarse right now, but they're gonna put six feet of fill in there? How is that gonna affect our properties coming up to our back line? And also, the other question I wanna know is, what about the floodplain back there? I mean, we've lived there a long time and I've seen that come quite a bit off of Lena Gulch up into that field there. And also, just recently, when it was really raining, the heavy rains, it was coming off the streets and it was really flooding in that field, through that field, pretty bad. So, what do they intend to do there? This is my question. On the six feet of fill they're gonna fill up against our back property, how's that gonna affect ours? Because it's, can you answer that one?
Here's what we'll do. We'll take your question and we'll ask the applicant when we do a second round. So, we'll ask the applicant, so you...
I've lived there for forty years and I've seen Lena Gulch flood. And when that dam burst that time, the waterboard, it came right almost up to my front door, my back door. It was so bad. That's what worries me about this area here. It's, you know, as it is now, naturally, it actually takes the water away naturally and absorbs it properly. But I think it's just gonna create one huge problem when we get to the point where they start building. There's gonna be nothing but, I don't know, water everywhere, I should imagine. But to me, it's just a situation, it would have been nice just left in its natural state and as it is, there's wildlife there. We're gonna push it all out. And I don't, if you walk along Lena Gulch now, there's beavers in there and everything. It's quite nice along there. But to me, I don't think Wheat Ridge needed these extra homes in this city. So, that's my opinion. I think we have enough homes here now without trying to develop more. And I think Meredith, many years ago, when we're, oh, she said it's gonna be twelve more roofs in here. So, to me, it was just a ploy from the city to get more revenue. Thank you.
Could you do me a favor? Oh, I needed, could you spell your last name? I just, I didn't catch it. I'm sorry. No, I just didn't, I didn't catch it quick enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Come on up. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Amy Sares, S-A-R-E-S, and I live at thirty-four fifty-five Quail Street. And I do agree with what Arthur was saying. It is a big concern. Just in the eleven years that I've lived there, there's been a ton of runoff flooding up to the back of my property. Just concerned about where all that water is gonna go. So, that definitely needs to be addressed. The other question I would wanna ask is what exactly they're going to do behind our properties? What, you know, what's that gonna look like? How's that gonna come, you know, up here? How much, I guess, leeway or, you know, how much is like from the back of my property to the next property, what that looks like? I guess that's pretty much it. I'm just concerned about what that is gonna look like behind us when they do develop it. And like I said, the flood, the water I'm really concerned about. Because I even have a little bit of a hill in my backyard and that floodwater came right up to that little hill from Lena Gulch, which is a considerable distance when you look at the layout.
The September rains?
September, but this happened in, I think it was the spring of 'oh-two or 'oh-three as well. There was a huge flood at that time and that was where it came way, way up high. But we do have major problems with runoff coming down off of Quail Street, north or south of us and then down. It's a major problem, so. It's a major problem, so... In fact, that very first lot, which they don't have on here, when that, in September, it was a lake in their yard. And that's right where that little gulch runs. It's big, it's bad. So I just, that would be my big concern, is how they're gonna handle all that water.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Sares?
When you've experienced these, uh, these big flooding or near-flooding events, uh, in your opinion, is more of that water a result of overflow coming off of Quail Street? Or is it a result of water coming off of that little tributary to the west?
You know, it's kind of a combination. The one I spoke of in '03, that was, that was just from the gulch itself. Um, in September, that was probably a lot of runoff, combination of runoff and just, you know, just... I mean, that was subterranean rain. So, and it, I think the water, just the rain was so heavy that it drenched the, um, land. And then the runoff created, it was like a torrent going through there. It was unbelievable. So, um, it's been both. I'll just say it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will close the public comment section. So now we will return to questions of staff. Commissioner Ohm. Commissioner Tim. Commissioner Dorsey.
I am sort of thinking with these people that just talked. We're gonna raise the ground level here six feet. And I did walk some of this the other day, and then I did again today. That the property that is going to be developed is quite a bit lower than these properties on Quail. And if you bring this up six feet, I think, I don't think you're gonna have the water problems from Lena Gulch, because it's gonna be six feet higher than Lena Gulch. I mean, the water is going to infiltrate it. The way I'm looking at it, I mean, it sort of went down, it had a ditch that goes across where they're gonna run that one pipe, uh, over to... I mean, it just, I mean, it's a low spot now, but it's not gonna be a low spot. So I don't think that's gonna do... It just doesn't look to me like it would create any more flooding than it was bad flooding with what you have now. Because it just sort of blew, it's six feet higher than you left it at. Lena Gulch would take the water.
Did you have any? Yep.
I guess the, uh, question I'd have for staff is, you know, I was actually at Prospect Valley Elementary, not, not the week in mid-September when there were all the horrible floods last year, but like a couple days before, right, when we got that little preview. And there was, I don't know, six inches of hail in the parking lot. And the hail was coming down Quail Street, and it was like a flood on Quail Street, right? Right in front of a lot of these folks' homes. You know, I'm thinking of that in context with what the neighbors here are saying, and in the context of what the Corps of Engineers has proposed in terms of revisions, and that, uh, Mr. Bishop, uh, has presented in terms of a revision. And I'm wondering if we need to take into consideration the amount of drainage that is actually heading down Quail Street in combination with the modifications that the Corps has proposed to mitigate wetlands, but also, you know, the, 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 those, those nice big drainage pipes that are handling most of the actual, like, flood-related drainage that would head from south to north into Lena Gulch. I just, I guess, I have some concerns about the larger drainage picture in general, and how any elevation change in this new subdivision might impact what's already there. So I don't know if you guys have some sort of answer for me on that? Or like, what might be possible in terms of studying that? Or if that's...
Yeah, um, you know, perhaps the applicant can speak to it further, but I know the two large 54 and 60-inch pipes that are proposed to put in are to take drainage from way beyond this site, I think, down to 32nd and even beyond. Uh, so that's taken into account, and the intent is to pick that up and provide some relief, not only to replace the water that might normally be going down that ditch, but get it in the pipe instead, and get it out to the gulch quicker, rather than, you know, accumulating in the, in the, in the low areas. And, um, regarding the fill, the six feet, I don't know if that's an average or... But, uh, you know, typically, the, um, you know, the lots are filled to bring the houses and the streets up to the correct level. But then we have the drainage easements surrounding each lot, which are intended to convey the water either to the storm sewer in the street or directly back to the gulch. So, um, so as far as, you know, the site itself, the development, not negatively impacting or making worse, you know, the neighboring properties, that's the intent of the drainage design they've come up with.
So the drainage design that's submitted, that we have in front of us here, not necessarily the revision, because we've just seen that tonight, but the way you interpret the subdivision plat as submitted, it has a no-net negative impact on the, on the surrounding drainage, I guess I would say.
Yeah, correct. That's the number-one thing we look for when we review these drainage plants, is that it's not negatively impacting or making worse the adjoining properties. And, you know, and I'll add too, there may be localized drainage issues on Quail Street, you know, unrelated to this development. We have a pretty deficient storm sewer system all over town, and this is probably one area, too, that, uh, you know, needs some help, too. I don't think, uh, you know, most of our streets don't have curb and gutter, or even storm sewer for that matter. So, um, we do have a lot of localized areas like Quail Street all over.
And if, and if, uh, local property owners, say, along Quail Street or anywhere else in the city had, uh, concerns about localized drainage, they would, what's the proper procedure to try and get that addressed? Is it a request to your office, or is it a request...
That's correct. And, uh, um, you know, when I heard about the hail there, too, um, I don't know about the hail incident you spoke about, but I know back in September last year, we had, um, maybe not in this area, but closer up to the rec center, we had, had some massive amounts of hail that plugged our storm sewer systems, the catch basins, and really caused some havoc. So, um, you know, a lot of it's just good maintenance, too, keeping things clean and cleared up.
Okay, thank you.
Did we ask all our questions of staff? So do we have any more questions of the applicant? No? No? You're off the hook? Okay. Um, yeah, please, if you wanna give a closing...
With regard to this drainage, on the backside, the intent on the backside of the lots that are on the east side of the project, basically what happens is, in our project, we've created a swale that handles all the flows from the back of your lots, comes onto this property today, and it goes into a swale, so that it conveys the flows in that swale down to Lena Gulch. And then the fill comes up. So there's a period, there's about 20 feet of width behind your lots into this property that's being used to convey drainage down to Lena Gulch and help drain your property. The other issue is, all that storm drainage that's coming down from all the way up from 26th Avenue, and all those neighborhoods up there, is all coming down through here and to the west, to the, to the west of this project, and being conveyed all down to Lena Gulch. The pipes will actually keep this, that whole area down there from flooding, because it'll, it'll collect it and push it through the site and beyond your properties. So I think that will help you. I am also hearing that there's a significant amount of flow coming down Quail. And if you look at the plan, which I can do, I think... So if you look at this plan on this corner here, this corner will now connect to the sidewalk that's already existing. And what will happen is, I think it'll actually help your properties, because a lot of that water that's coming down Quail will go, will make that turn and come down and through the subdivision and through the streets, and then into these, this is the proposed inlet today, which is, which would be here. But it would be collected here and/or overflow at this point, and then into Lena Gulch. So a lot of the drainage that you're seeing today coming down Quail, and I can't promise you that, we didn't really, we don't, we don't really have a way of understanding exactly what's going. It's kind of your life experience. But, but my intuition tells me that it's not gonna wanna keep going straight if it can go to the left. And it will, because this is going downhill, down 33rd Street. So it'll, it'll start running through, and we've got, it can come down to this edge and collect, and come down to this edge and collect. And hopefully, it'll reduce some of the impacts to the front side of your properties. So I just wanted to make that clarification, if I could.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Ohm, we might have a question.
Yeah, I have one more question for staff that, and maybe this has been answered, but just, um, I guess, can you let me, if we didn't know about that, that latest graphic with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we approved this final plat just as is, and that all got recorded, what would happen when, you know, there was another change? Would that come back through planning commission and city council? Or would that just be administrative?
I think it would be, depending on the extent of the changes that would be required, which, like, I don't know, Scott, you wanna jump in here? I mean, obviously drainage is more of an administrative review. If it would require, like, a whole new subdivision layout with the street in a different location, and so on and so forth, we would definitely require them to replat. But if it were minor modifications that related to the drainage system, and like I say, we have some administrative flexibility. Usually, it's when it's less impactful instead of more impactful. When it becomes more impactful, that's when we wanna come back through public hearing.
Yeah, I'll just add, too, with, as far as the drainage changes that are being proposed, we reviewed it and provided, you know, this is what happens, and it gets Corps approval. The applicant would just need to revise the drainage report we've already approved. But this is fairly similar and consistent with what we've already reviewed. And, um, I think, as Meredith mentioned, you know, administratively review a revised drainage part, we'd be fine with that, just because what we're seeing here is not a huge change from what, you know, what they originally proposed and what we reviewed.
Okay, any more questions of staff? Okay, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm gonna go into discussion, and then I'm going to call for a motion. But before I do, on the record, we are hearing the case that's in front of us, even though we know this is conceptual. Yes, we are hearing the case in front of us, period. Yes?
You are. And you've got a couple options. If you feel that what, what they've shown you, yes, it's gonna be a little bit different from what you've got in your packet. If you feel that, you know, it's not such a difference, and you are confident with staff working with the applicant, it would be our recommendation that, or you would be able to approve it with that condition, the added condition that I added in, that's not in your staff report. If you feel like it's so much of a change that it really impacts the neighborhood or gives you a whole different development feel, you could continue it. And then we would review, you know, instead of going straight to council, we'd come back, we'd review the new design, we'd review the drainage report, and then get a recommendation, move to council. So you've got the two options, to approve it with the condition or continue it.
Or deny.
Or deny. I would...
But I mean, it's, it's an option.
It is an option.
Okay. Is this scheduled for city council?
We had it originally scheduled for August 11th. And I guess from the staff perspective, we have worked intensively with the property or the potential developer for the last few years, trying to come up with a design that worked not only for the property, but was consistent with the surrounding area. And, um, you know, if we could keep on that same schedule, we would be delighted. And depending on, you know, what their resubmital looks like, we'd probably be delaying the case another month for city council, if you decide to continue it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the explanation. So I'm gonna close the public hearing. And now I am open to discussion. And for those in the audience, that means we chat. But we don't chat with staff, we chat. We talk. Yes, Commissioner Buckland?
I really appreciate the work that the applicant put into accommodating the, um, the wetlands retention in the non-submitted conceptual plan that we saw in their presentation. And I think it would probably meet all of the, you know, drainage requirements that the city will have and so forth. But since, since that revision was included in their presentation, it's part of what we're hearing before us. And since we don't have that plan in here as part of the plat, I'm just a little nervous moving to, you know, approve this as it is, because it sounds like, you know, there's gonna be enough of a revision that it's gonna require the loss of a lot, the addition of wetlands, the change in diameter of, you know, the drainage and so forth. So I'd like us to consider a continuance, so that they can get that organized and set up, so we can really look at it and consider it properly.
Anybody else? Commissioner Tim?
I guess I would, I would echo that. I think that there's enough issues with the drainage that I think it does warrant a further discussion. I would also encourage, or perhaps add on to that. I know that staff's had a, and the applicant have probably two years, is one year and 11 months too long, maybe. But I would encourage them as well to see what you can do with Lot 12. I just, if we don't continue it, I'm probably gonna vote a denial, just because I think that's poor planning to have that Lot 12 like that, just to be honest with you. I think that it's, if we can find another way to connect that to the cul-de-sac or something like that, so I think maybe look at the drainage, and also perhaps look at what we can do to re-figure Lot 12 in a more, I guess, just a more traditional street and lot block format would be beneficial for me. So that's my thoughts. I probably would support a continuance.
Anybody else speaking?
I think, uh, I could probably go either way, continuance, or we could add a condition. The, some of the changes are small, but I do agree with Commissioner Tim's that the flag lot, I'm not real crazy about. I'm trying to look at this as far as the, from the previous one that was shown, the old tentatively-approved plat that had the different access. And now the intent of this one is really to have the connection of the east-west road there to a future lot. And, yeah, it appears that that, that flag lot is, you know, it is, it appears to be kind of leftover. But now that, now that there's the, there has to be some type of compliance with Army Corps of Engineers, and you're basically losing Lot 2, you know, perhaps there's some opportunity of, instead of having that little flag lot 12 that perhaps that, that lot that is being given up, I don't know, if something could be reconfigured, so...
Commissioner Dorsey, do you have any comments? And I have no comments. So I am open for a motion of some sort from somebody.
Uh, I move to continue this case until such time that the applicant can resubmit with the modified plat that reflects the, uh, loss of Lot 2 and the retention of the wetlands per the Army Corps of Engineers' due requirements, so that... per the Army Corps of Engineers' due requirements, so that the commissioners and staff will have enough time to do our due diligence and, and consider, consider the plat in detail.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a clarification? You're not expecting them to have a response from the Army Corps?
No.
You're expecting them to address the Army Corps and, and, and present what they're going to present in their, in their 45-day...
That is correct. I'm not expecting the applicant to wait 45 days for the Army Corps of Engineers to make a decision. What I, what can, my main concern is that we can see something on paper in greater detail than on a 12-inch screen for several minutes, as opposed to, you know, the better part of a week that we usually get when we, when we consider these cases. Just, I just want a little more time and a little more detail to be paid to this, so that we give it the attention it deserves.
Are you okay with that, that clarification? Okay. Any other comments?
Question from staff.
Questions from staff.
I guess I'd like to talk a little bit about timeframe. We, we have a couple of choices. When we do a continuance, we can continue it to a date certain, which kind of based on my sense of things, would probably be a month. So that would be the second meeting in August. I don't know what that date is.
I do.
The third, Thursday's, good.
It would be the 21st.
So August 21st. And then back to the applicant, perhaps they could give us, kind of weigh in on whether they think that's doable, or just what they, they think their timeframe might be.
So we have a choice, a date certain or no date certain?
No date certain would work, too.
Okay. And so...
Can I clarify the intent of my motion?
Yes.
As I, as I, as I worded it, it was until such time as the applicant can have the materials prepared. So if they can do it real quick, that's great. If they need more time, they need more time. I, I wanted to make it as flexible and efficient for the applicant as possible.
So to the applicant, we can go to a date certain, which would be the 7th or the 21st of August, or September. We can go into September. Or we can keep it open-ended? Yes?
Yes. And, and what, the only thing that means is that we would...
We have to repost, right?
We would repost, we, yeah, do all that stuff with, with the new date.
So what happens is, if we do a date certain, then we do not have to repost, you do not have to repost, we don't have to put it back through all the venues that we do. If we, yeah, if we do a date certain, we don't have to do any of that. If we do a date open-ended, new posting, new signs, et cetera, et cetera. No, no new neighborhood meeting, no, no. Yeah. And we'll wait for you to chat.
I didn't, I didn't know there was a difference in posting.
What say you?
21st, please.
Okay. So we, I need you to amend, and you to make a friend...
I'll make an amendment to my motion to continue until the 21st of August.
Second.
You accept that? Any other comments, any other questions? Okay. Please vote. And you're voting to continue this until August 21st, when we will have a new packet? And you're welcome to join us again in the audience. Ready? Please vote.
And that carries 4 to 1 with Commissioner Brinkman voting no.
Okay. So we're done with the public hearing. We have to go to other items. You're welcome to stay and listen to the end of our meeting, or you're welcome to quietly leave. Thank you.
Thanks.
So on other items... Do we have any other items? Do you have other items? Commissioner Tim's has a question of staff. Did you like tonight that I called you all commissioner?
Yes.
Versus the, versus the more informal staff? We have a question of you.
Mayor.
We have a question of you.
Do you have a question for staff? Is, is Ms. Payne no longer employed with the city?
She, she is no longer employed with the city. She took a position in Lake Stevens, Washington. And so has been gone about a month. And Lauren Michelak was promoted to senior planner to take her place. So Lauren will be kind of doing a hybrid of both long-range planning, special projects, and also development review.
Any other questions? So I'm assuming we have a quorum for the 21st. We better... Guys? Hey, guys? Oh, well. Do we, any other, anything else? Are we, are, are we doing any, any internal review of any code or anything?
We are so busy with land development cases and building permits, that we probably won't do code until fall.
Okay.
And we, but we know what the hot buttons are, the signs, the lighting. Those are probably the two...
Yeah.
The two priorities.
I was a little bit concerned when they talked about uplighting.
Oh.
Tonight, I'm like, ah!
I was, I was a little concerned with their, their...
Fill?
Monument height, their fence height.
Oh, okay.
And it's no longer election year. That was the reason last year we didn't, right, we didn't upgrade the signs, so.
So I, I want to go on the record saying that I am getting contacted about the property on 38th and Wadsworth. And I am telling everybody that we haven't heard the case yet, and that their voice would best be heard through city council, that we can only review things via the regulations and the code.
So let me give you an update on that. We do have a developer who's looking at the entire piece from 35th to 38th. So that includes the old Ford dealership and the vacant piece. The zoning's in place, they're zone mixed-use commercial. And so as far as a site planning exercise, and what that entails, that is an administrative review. There will be a plat document, though, that comes through public hearing. And we had a neighborhood meeting for the concept plan, I want to say about a month ago, that was pretty well attended with about 50 folks. And we have, you know, repeated folks coming in and asking, and kind of checking the status. So that's where we are on that.
Okay. And then I just want to highlight for those listening or watching, that we have these community meetings this week. I don't have the schedule in front of me. But there...
Give me two seconds, I'll tell you.
Oh, here we go. We might have. Thank you. I know I missed one yesterday. There were two meetings yesterday, one in the morning, one in the evening. So I'm just highlighting for everybody to go and attend. Listen, if nothing else. We can listen, since it's, we don't have anything quasi-judicial.
Okay. We have further meetings Saturday, July 19th, this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. here at the Hayward Park, so the park right here at City Hall. Wednesday, July 23rd, 6:00 p.m. at the Active Adult Center. And then Thursday, July 24th, 10:00 a.m. at Anderson Park.
Thank you. So, do you have anything else?
Just that we still have an opening on Planning Commission for District 4. So I'm looking for candidates from District 4. And the final thing is thank you to Bruce Room for sitting in for us in Kim Wagner's absence. So he's been great to be able to come in and know how to work the equipment, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. If that's, I, if that's it, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I move to adjourn?
Please vote.
That carries 5-0.
Thank you. Please turn off your monitors.